It's like a little bit of a 67.
... example, Clay Williams. Clay Williams just applied the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, the recognition or the uh, invocation, we're gonna do something just a little bit different tonight, so if you would just please go ahead and be seated, I wanna read something. A little boy wanted to meet God. He knew it would be a long trip to where God lives, so he packed his suitcase with a bag of potato chips and a six-pack of root beer. Started his journey. When he had gone about three blocks, he met an old man. He was sitting in the park just staring at some pigeons. The boy sat down next to him and opened his suitcase. He was about to take a drink from his root beer when he noticed the old man looked hungry, so he offered him some chips. He gratefully accepted it and smiled at him. His smile was so pretty that the boy wanted to see it again. So he offered him a root beer. Again, he smiled at him. The boy was delighted. He sat there all afternoon eating and smiling and never said a word. As twilight approached, the boy realized how tired he was and he got up to leave. But before he'd gone more than a few steps, he turned around, ran back to the old man, gave him a hug. He gave him his biggest smile ever. When the boy opened the door to his own house, a short time later, his mother was surprised by the look of joy on his face. She asked him, "What did you do today that made you so happy?" "Well, I had lunch with God." But before his mother could respond, he said, "You know what?" And he's got the most beautiful smile I've ever seen. Meanwhile, the old man, also radiant with joy, returned to his home. His son was stunned by the look of peace on his face. He said, "Dad, what did you do today that made you so happy?" He said, "I ate potato chips in the park with God." However, his son responded, "You know, he's much younger than I expected." Too often, we underestimate the power of touch, smile, and a kind word. Couple of announcements. The World Tai Chi and Qi Gong Day was meant to bring practitioners together and allow people to learn more about Tai Chi and Qi Gong through this day of celebration and practice that will be celebrated around the world this year on April the 30th, 2016. We were hoping that we would have some representatives, as you may have seen in the paper last week, there's a Honduran delegation here. Andy Gibbons, who is the one that has Dynamite Coffee, works with these Honduran farmers growing, they grow organic coffee in Honduras. And so it's really a wonderful thing that you've got the growers and the end producer up here working together. Of course, I like it a lot because it's small business. This is true small business and connecting both of them. So if they do come, they're, I didn't get in touch with them until this morning, invited them to the meeting. I wanna give them a picture of the town square. And, but if they don't come, I'll just take it by and give it to them later on. But if they do, I may change the schedule and just simply recognize them. We have a proclamation here. Spring litter, spring litter sweep 2016. Whereas the North Carolina Department of Transportation organizes an annual spring statewide roadside cleanup to ensure, to ensure clean and beautiful roads in North Carolina. And whereas the spring 2016 litter sweep roadside cleanup will take place April the 16th and April 30th, 2016. And whereas adoptive highway volunteers, Department of Transportation employees, Department of Correction inmates and community service workers, local government agencies, community leaders, civic and community organizations, businesses, churches, schools, and environmentally concerned citizens conducting annual local cleanups during this litter sweep. And whereas this year, Black Mountain observed the annual cleanup on Saturday, April the 2nd, which was a week ago Saturday. Now therefore, I see Michael Sobletown of Black Mountain do proclaim April 16th through April 30th, as the spring litter sweep time in our town. Encourage all citizens to take active role in making our town and our community cleaner, more beautiful. Signed, this 20th day, April 16th. And it has occurred, and Matt has got some figures for us.
I would, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just announce that we had, this year, we had 62 participants, 126 and a half volunteer hours, and 119 bags of trash were collected at the, at the litter sweep here. So I encourage everyone to, to get involved in the upcoming week. But that's what we, that's what we accomplished here in Black Mountain. It's something to be proud of.
Very good. Uh, we now move on to citizens' comments. Julie White, first in line here.
I'm Julie White, 205 Ninth Street, and I'm Chair of the Greenway Commission here. So I just have a couple of announcements. First of all, I wanna thank everybody who was involved in the Greenway Challenge, which was this last Saturday. Despite the cold windy weather, we had great turnout. And we had great volunteers. Wanna really thank Becky James, who coordinated it, and even our mayor for coming to running in the cold wind. But I wanna thank everybody for that. And I also wanna announce a series of hikes they're gonna do this spring. And the first one will be Saturday, April 23rd. And they're called Greenway Discovery Days. And there are little cards about this out front. So we're gonna do a short hike on each one of the greenways. We're gonna talk a little bit about the history of the greenways and the area where the greenways occur. And we'll talk a little bit about the flora and fauna. They will be at 10 o'clock. The first one will be at Lake Tomahawk on Saturday, the 23rd, and we will meet at Pavilion. So these will be led by different Greenway Commissioners. And we will have a person from the Board of Alderman at each meeting. And I think Larry will be there on the first Saturday. So we invite you to come each month, 10 o'clock, the fourth Saturday, and learn more about our greenways. And we'll have fun, a little refreshments, and we'll talk a little bit out about what we want for the future. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Julie. Is it June?
Yes.
Please, come on up, June. I couldn't make out the last name. Please. When you get up there, please, give us your name.
Hi, I'm June Aden Kula, and I live at 507 Hallowassee Avenue. And I'm a resident of Black Mountain. I love living here. Um, I'm actually here dealing with the storm issue, storm water and erosion issue dealing with Tudor Croft. My home is directly behind the trailer there. And they built a driveway. And so when it rains, the storm water just piles, well, the road behind me is Byrd. And so that's why I'm addressing this to the town of Black Mountain. And so when it rains, the water just puddles right there on Byrd and comes straight through my property. And let me just, before I go on, is, I'm here so you can be aware of the problem that's happening with my property, particularly my property, and also how you can help me. And I'm not against Tudor Croft. I think it's a great thing for Black Mountain. So going back to the issue, it's happened when they started digging in July of last summer. Um, so, I mean, June, I've had issues with them with storm water, excuse me, in July, August, and September. In July and August, I actually went up to the developers and I spoke to them. I said, "There, there used to be an existing ditch on Byrd and the water ran down to a drain in the lower part of Byrd. That ditch does not exist." So in July and August, I had some water piling. It came straight through my property, property. It moved the mulch that I had around my blueberry bushes, moved the mulch around my gardens. I have gardens. Then I had, it happened again in September, and this time I got ahold of Mr. Harold. And it happened, the worst was in December. And I, and I spoke with Mr. Harold in January. I have pictures of all four incidents. And I don't have them with me, but I do have the pictures with me where the water just piles. As it comes down the driveway, it piles right there on Byrd. It comes right through my property, through the fence. And it's been presently, it's creating a little ditch by my blueberry bushes. And I'm getting ready to put my garden in, my spring garden, and put mulch around my blueberry bushes again. And spring is coming, and I know rain is coming. So, I'm addressing this to you. How can you help me? Because I need help.
We will, we will look into, we got several other people speaking to it, and then Matt will speak to it at the end.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, next is James Hyde.
Let me, first of all, let me just mention, we have a lie here because we have three minutes on citizen comment. It's two minutes on the green.
You're, look, I didn't come to speak. I just thought I'd let you know what we're doing in our neighborhood. Uh, I've met with Matt and also with Jamie. And I've met with our neighbors. Uh, I live on Okanichi, 514 Okanichi. And the whole business about the, the drain, the water coming down, mud as well as water flooding our land, the lower the land, the more water is there. And I happen to be on the lower end of that along with Mrs. Fox and Fred Alexander. So we had a meeting. Mr. Banks and his daughter Michelle invited me there. I have been trying to figure out a way to bring the people together, the folks at Tudor Croft and here at Black Mountain with the, actually, Don, you were there at that meeting. And people ventilated their feelings. We got a good clear picture of mud and water all through our yards because of the pipe system. But what got clearer to us was that Black Mountain was responsible only for the pipe underneath the roads. And that it meant that Tudor Croft would be responsible for getting the easement for, from the private property owners. I wanted to report to you that that's our understanding of this and to give support to my neighbors, as well as speak for myself, that this has been a problem for a long time, even before we had Tudor Croft there. It just has gotten worse since they've cleared off that whole farm. And the water has no way to stop it like it did before, or at least slow it down. They did dig a deeper, what do you call that, holding?
The center farm?
Yeah. They did dig a deeper pond. And that was good. But it still had mud and water come down. Plus, it created a problem where they filled in a ditch that was back there where the water had places to go besides dam. And so what we were asking was for the city to work together with Jamie and with you and with Tudor Croft, for those two folks to get together. Because hearing the families of these people who have had damage to their home, and some of you may speak to that, or, and damage to their yard, which happened to be me. And Matt has come out and met with me before and along with Jamie. And so I have some concern about this being a long-term problem that's been raised, but we haven't been able to address it effectively. And now we've come to a kind of omega place where we got people that we can, at least we got a three-way conversation. And by luck of the draw, I got to be the liaison person. So I'm here to announce that you've met the reluctant liaison person. And at the same time, I want to say to my neighbors, please speak up like you did before. Because we are very interested in solving this problem in a, not so much of an emotional way that gets in the way of our thinking sometimes. But we vented ourselves, I thought, pretty well. And everybody was heard. We have some ideas. And what we're hoping is that we can get Tudor Croft to buy or to get the easement for Mrs. Fox, which would settle part of the problem. But there's a ditch that we have to get opened up again. And so we need to have some cooperation and communication. So I've become the communication avenue.
Well, we're gonna be, we're definitely be looking at it. That's Matt's on top of it. And hopefully, we can, we can all work together.
Please, I would like to let you know that with the help of Michelle and with Diane Morris, I will be, we will be the liaison people so that we can have some communication between the three bodies, the three different units, okay?
Very good. Thank you, sir. Next speaking will be John Banks.
Okay, my name is John Banks. I live at 511 Hallowassee Avenue. Lived there about 22 years, and Michelle lives there now. And our issue was around Christmas of December, we had a big flood. Where they pushed the dirt from the holding pond behind my house, it's probably 20, 25 foot tall. They put up no silt fence. The cupboard was already stocked up. It flooded the basement. Red clay mud all in the basement. So I went out and talked to Mr. Ogle. He said he would take care of it. He walked out to the house. I showed him the basement, everything, my concern. My driveway is concrete. It's three, four inches of soapy mud, looked like pudding. Every time it rains, it floods of that. And when the water runs up, I have to scoop the mud up, wash the driveway out. So he said he would take care of it. So the next time it rained, Michelle called me, said the basement flooded again. So I went back up. Our only thing they did was brought three bales of straw out and set it on the side of the road. Didn't clean the cupboard, nothing. Didn't do no grading, no over cover on the, there was routes probably waist-deep where the water run through the loose dirt and come down through the yard. So I called Don Collins. The jail told me they could done everything they could do. It was a town's problem. So I called Don Collins. Matt, Jamie, and Don came up, looked. They changed that cupboard and stuff out. But our basement flooded three times. Our hardwood floor, you know, we had to take it up because of mold issue, the carpet. Everything else, the things we've done in the last few years, we had to take out. So when I took it out, I called Don, Jamie, Matt, and Don came up. I showed them before we started turning up the mold issue. Well, matter of fact, today, when I turned to talk to Mr. Ogle, asked him what he was planning on doing about my basement. And I told him, I said, "I don't want you to fix the basement where it leaked. I'll fix that. But I do feel like that you should fix what I had to take out because of your watering stuff, muddy water." And he said he would get back and contact me this afternoon. And I've heard nothing. We set up a meeting prior at 9:00 in the morning. I live in Norfolk. And I drove up to the house. I waited 11 o'clock. He didn't show up. He never called, nothing. So I got the community together, the ones that had problems, around 18 or 20 people. I called the town, came over here and talked to Josh. I wanted to get the town, the people up there, and the people in the community to see exactly whose problem was who. Everybody blaming everybody else. So the town said they couldn't come. Mr. Sharp from Erosion Control, I went over to his office. They've been rode up three times since December for the same thing, three different times, and nothing's been done. So that's my issue.
Thank you, sir. This is, this has been a problem, and we're looking into it. I know that Don was talking bad about it. And hopefully, we will have some, some sort of a, of a plan.
And I think after their, I'll just say that after their meeting, I think we've, we've got a process for facilitating conversations that Mr. Hyde had talked about, to, to, to make sure that some of these, these property issues are addressed among the, among the proper parties.
And also, I hope then that, that Mr. Ogle will be following through from some of his stuff on the Tudor Croft side.
Yeah, I think there's a handful of developers there. He is, he is certainly one of the plaintiffs there.
All right.
Could I ask, Mr. Mayor, are they, are the developers in violation of any?
Not of their stormwater permit.
Any stormwater issues?
I think Mr. Banks is correct. They've had some violations with their erosion control that Buckland County handles.
With the county.
Yes. But they're, but they're not, they're not in violation of their, of the stormwater permit that the town handles. That doesn't, that doesn't mean that we don't want to, to help mediate among the, among the parties and make sure that the issues are addressed. But in terms of, in terms of their stormwater permit, they are in compliance with that.
But they've had three violations previous to?
Previously. I think they're, I think they're not, I think they're not in, in violation now. But they, but they have had, they have, from the county, yes, surely have.
And have you, have you met with Jess?
With Jess Gardner, engineer? Yes, we've met with him too. So, but, but from our perspective, of course, they're looking at, we're looking at the, the stormwater permit that they have with us. And so, so that, that they, that they have stayed. We have an engineer too, that we contracted with, that helps make sure they stay in compliance with that.
Did you repeat that? I couldn't hear you, Matt.
I'm sorry. So in terms of the stormwater permit that they get from the town, they're, the, the developers are in compliance with that currently. And we, and we've hired, they have an engineer, obviously. We've hired an outside engineering firm to review that. Now their issues are erosion control issues with, and Buckland County handles that. And I think like Mr. Banks had said, they've had some, they've had some violations in that regard. And that's what, that's, that's what we've tried to, we will try to, to get the right parties together to, to take a look at it from that perspective. But, but in terms of their stormwater permit with the town, they are in compliance with that.
One, one other piece of information is Jess is, is the engineer that works for them. And he is, and ours supposed to work together with Mrs. Fox to get the storm drain thing all the way to Lake Tomahawk.
Yes, they're working on some drainage issues there, yes, that, through private property.
So that, that plan has to be made?
That plan has to be made. That, they have, it has to be approved, yes.
All of the families that were there agreed to give an easement to, to the Tudor Croft folks. Mrs. Fox was not there, so she couldn't let speak. So we're supposed to meet with her in order to do that. But I'd like to know that piece of information from you.
Okay, what, I'm sorry, what piece of information?
About the storm plane.
The permit?
Yes.
Okay. I tell you what, you get, I won't, you give me a call and we'll talk about the, we'll talk, and you and I and Josh will go through what the, what, what their permit requirements are and what they'll have to do to, to complete that plan.
I need to understand that so I can talk to the folks.
Because you're the, you're the spokesperson. Gotcha.
Okay. All right. Okay, come up to the, one quick.
Just addressing the stormwater issue because isn't, my understanding is when a developer develops something, the erosion and stormwater should remain on their property.
Well, well, those are two separate issues. The, the stormwater permit, there are, we have, the town has requirements that, that they had to comply with in terms of how, of how the stormwater is held on their property and how it's released from their property. Erosion control is, is what they, is what they do to keep, obviously, from when they, when they clear land, what keeps that from washing off. So, so Buckland County handles that portion of it. The town handles the stormwater portion of it. And so they're two, they're separate. Obviously, they're linked together because they're, they only occur when, when you have a development. But, but they're two, they're two separate, they're, they're linked but two separate issues in that regard. Erosion, erosion is your, is your concern. And I can tell that from the three, from all the conversations. And, and, and so that, that's what, that's what has to be addressed, and that's what we're still working with.
Well, my issue is water. It's stormwater coming off of there, and then it's causing erosion on my property. It's not erosion. It's stormwater. I do have an issue with stormwater.
Well, we could talk to you some more about this, about the, about the permit then. If that's, but I, but it, but, and I don't wanna get bogged down in it. I would just say that, that stormwater issues that exist, you know, the developer obviously can't be responsible for, for water that already came off their, off the property before they purchased it. And so.
No, no, this has happened after they purchased it.
We'll take, we'll take a look at our permit.
Let Matt look at it. And if you'll just keep us abreast with some emails as to where we are on this.
Yes, sir. We'll do, I'll do that.
Okay. Number four, communications, Matt. The boards and commissions.
Yes, I think Recreation and Parks Director Casey Connor's gonna give a, his semi-annual report.
Mayor, board, thank you for the time this evening to give our Recreation and Parks Spring Semi-Annual Report. Some nice winter shot of Lake Tomahawk. Obviously, that's not from this year, but, but it was such a nice shot, I wanted to use it. This report covers from October through the end of March. And that's where we're headed. So we're headed towards the, the nice spring flowers and everything. So some of the trends in athletics that we're seeing. On the left-hand side there is the youth sports. The green numbers are the indoor soccer numbers. And the blue numbers are the youth basketball numbers. As you can see, the, the soccer continues to grow at a, at a pretty good rate. The youth basketball is growing as well, just a little bit slower. On the right-hand side are the adult sports programs. The softball program is the dark blue. The basketball program is the middle one, which is, I don't, I'm not good with colors describing what color that is. Maybe like a Carolina blue. And then the one on the right, the smaller one, is the dodgeball program. As you can see, the dodgeball program has, has kinda tapered off a little bit, which was a good performer for us in the past. And, you know, it's just kind of the typical life cycle of a program. The basketball program has, has gone from 13 teams to 10 teams, which is, you know, still a, a pretty good, healthy, healthy league. And the softball program, we've had a pretty steady 12 in that. Oops, wrong way. All right. Our health and wellness programs. We have, in the Wear Red Day this year, we had 15 staff and 22 participants in the Wear Red Day, which is pictured there on the left. We had 20 participants in the Pink Mountain Day, which was the Breast Cancer Awareness Day. We've had two super lunches. We had 21 participants at the last super lunch, which was held over at the training room at the Police Department. And then, so far, we've had 22 people in the Spring Into Action Program, which is the employee wellness, kinda get-moving program, where we measure people's steps and their action and try to get people, you know, moving and motivated for the springtime. The garden programs. We have 97 registered gardeners for this year. That, that is up. It's a bit higher than it has been in the past. We do have more multiple gardeners using the same plots. Although, we do have more plots available as well. So, so there's two things happening there. The after-school garden club, we had 17 kids in the fall. We had six volunteers with that. The, the spring one just started this past week, so I don't have the numbers on there because it's an April number. We had over 4,500 pounds of food that was donated to the produce distribution in 2015. Pretty impressive number. Almost just under 2,000 hours of volunteer labor there at the garden. And, let's see, 200, you know, just under 300 gardeners and volunteers total for 2015. So that's the gardeners, the, you know, the individual gardeners plus the individual volunteers. That's how many total people we had there. And then we've also got the Carver Garden opening with plots for 12 people. And those will be the raised beds that'll be out back at the Carver Center. That, that- And those will be the raised beds that'll be out back at the Carver Center. Those are in the process of being built and should be completed or mostly completed by the end of this week. Some of the garden program trends. The volunteers and the donations. Volunteers is the darker blue on the left. As you can see, we've got a pretty steady number of volunteers that come out every year. It varies, you know, a little bit from year to year. You can see back in 2013, you know, we had a couple of larger groups that came out and helped, and so that kind of skews the numbers a little bit there. The donated food numbers. One of the things that we're hoping to see is the... As you can see, the number is much, much higher in 2015 than it was in the past. And they've integrated some new techniques at the garden. And they're hoping that was the reason that we had the big crop. But we'll see over the next couple of years to see if it was just, you know, a good crop of heavy vegetables or whether it was actually the good techniques. The trend on the right is the number of gardeners. As you can see, the number of gardeners and the interest in gardening continues to grow here in Black Mountain. The active aging programs. We had monthly movies going on down at the Lakeview Center. 15 participants. The lunch site. The lunch site has actually increased in numbers substantially from what it was this time last year and for the past several years. We've been averaging 21... Between 20 and 23 participants for the past several years there. And this year, we've been averaging about 30 people. So we're not sure if that's, you know, again, just kind of an anomaly or whether it's baby boomers, you know, more people in that population that are attending or not. Exercise classes. We're averaging 15 to 20 participants there. Again, that's a big bump from what we had been in the past. There'd been eight to 10 participants for each class. We had three Van Clan trips. We've added four new classes down there this year. Scrabble and games, duplicate bridge, beginner knitting, and weekly movies instead of just the monthly movies. The special events. For the Valentine Race, we had a good number this year at the Valentine Race. Again, it was a bump up. You'll see in the next slide comparing it to other years in the past. Circle of Lights is still well-attended. The Mini Monster Fest, which is the Halloween event that we have, and the Spring Egg Hunt, which we had just a few weeks ago, was very well-attended again this year. Let's see. The trend on the left is the number of programs offered at the Lakeview Center. So that's the darker blue bar. And then the smaller bar that's next to it are the new programs that we offer each year. Some of the old programs, we either, you know, they weren't well-attended, or the person that was teaching the class, you know, has lost interest or moved on. And so we, you know, we do away with a few classes each year, but we also add several more. So as you can see, we're steadily, you know, increasing the number of classes that are offered there. The one on the right is the Valentine 5K. The dark blue bar is the number of 5K runners, and the lighter blue bar is the number of runners that we had for the kids' fun run. Generally, we're, you know, getting right around 50 people for that. It's a good number. I think this year's number was a little bit lower on that because it was so cold that morning. I think a lot of the kids didn't want to come out. I don't blame them. I didn't really want to either, but I did. And Gray Eagle Arena this year, and this is as of... Well, that says 3/31/2015, but that should say 2016. The total expenditures was just under $21,000. The total revenues was just over $24,000, and we had over 150 rentals. And then on the next slide, you'll see how that compares to years in the past. The trend on the left is the Gray Eagle by the numbers, and that's the expenses versus revenues. The dark blue is the expense, and the light blue is the revenue. And as you can see, most years, we're pretty close on it. You know, one of the things this year, as you can see, we had a good bit more revenue than we did expenses. And I think the explanation for that is, number one, it's the increase in the number of people playing indoor soccer, but also because of our bounce house party rentals. And as you can see in the next trend, the regular rentals are the dark blue bars, and then the bounce house rentals are the lighter blue ones. And again, as of March 31st, we'd already had 29 bounce house rentals this year. We're aiming for 52. And we had, I think, three this past weekend, and I know we've got at least two this coming weekend. So the more people that come and experience it, that take their kids to it, the more people want to rent it and use it themselves. So we've definitely seen a big pickup in that, and I expect the numbers next year, you know, should be higher than they are this year. Some of our upcoming events. Pool will be opening Memorial Day weekend. We'll have the Black Mountain Swim Team again this year. That's another one of our programs that's doing really well, growing. We're also going to offer some different swimming lessons this year. We'll have an announcement on those in the paper and in our summer brochure that'll be coming out in a few weeks. And we're also hoping to offer a lifeguard class there at the pool. So the water's going to be cold in early May, but, you know, if they want to be a lifeguard, I guess they'll jump in. Park Rhythms, June 16th through August the 4th. Our sponsorship drive, we've changed up our... The way we're doing sponsorships for our programs. The way we've done it in the past is that as the program's coming up, you know, about eight weeks before the program, we send out things offering, you know, for people to help sponsor the program. This year, we're trying to do all of the programs in April. What we're trying to do is... We were getting a lot of feedback from people saying that they didn't want to be contacted multiple times, that, you know, we would have somebody from the senior center talk to them and somebody from athletics talk to them. And so we're trying to consolidate all of that. And so we're giving people the opportunity in April to sponsor all of our programs. One thing that'll really help is that in all of our flyers that we'll be doing, that will be later in the year, we'll be able to include logos and sponsor information on those flyers. So it'll really help, you know, get their name out there as well for a lot of the programs. And if you need any more information on that, just let me know. I can get you that. We've got a summer kickball league that we're going to be launching this year. It's been really popular in the area, and I think we'll be able to get a group of people out here in Black Mountain playing. As I said before, the Carver Raised Garden Beds. Those should be ready, you know, hopefully about mid-May, maybe possibly sooner. But that's what we're aiming for. Black Mountain Summer Adventures, which is our summer camp program. We went from offering 11 weeks of programs last summer to offering 16 sessions this summer, and they sold out in three days. So, you know, we're trying to figure out how we can keep growing that, but growing it responsibly so we can keep the qualities of the program without, you know, sacrificing by just, you know, growing too quickly. The July Fourth Street Dance will be coming up, obviously, on July 4th. And the Volunteer Thanks Party will be on May the 12th this year. And that's just where we invite all the people in that have helped with our department throughout the year. And we kind of usually get food donated and have a little banquet type thing for them. Two other things. Everybody will be, you know, probably driving by the Carver Center over the next month or so once the goats are out. We've got the electric fence is partially put up at this point, and at some point over the next month, we'll be getting goats out there to clear the hillside down behind the building. So that'll be neat to see, and we'll make sure that we get some good before and after pictures of that. Also, we've started a styrofoam, a formed styrofoam recycling program at Carver Center. And I'm sure Marilyn can give you much more detail than I can, but we do have... There are very specific things that we can take and very specific things that we cannot take. And we've got a nice board there above the recycling bins to let people know what they can drop off and what they can't drop off. They're not allowed to drop things off outside the doors. It has to be during regular business hours, so somebody can kind of... At least until everybody gets used to it, we can kind of help them decide what they can and cannot recycle there. So that's our semi-annual report. Do you all have any questions?
Yeah, I do. You were talking about the expenses versus the revenue that came in. Does that... Those expenses include utilities?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I was noticing your Fourth of July street dance deal there. How much money do we have raised for the fireworks?
Well, that's part of the April sponsorship program that we're doing as well. So it's raising money for fireworks and it's raising money for the street dance as well.
So how much money do we have raised?
I don't think we have much raised at this point.
No, this is our month. And so at our last staff meeting, we discussed... We put together letters that Casey's put together with the different packages that people can participate in. Firework sponsorship is one of those packages. Park Rhythms is one of the packages. There's different sponsorship levels, and that's how we'll raise the money. And I think like Casey said, I think our... Well, part of our goal is to not have to go back to people multiple times during the year so that if Casey goes to someone, then I don't go to them two months later, and Steve Jones doesn't go to them two months after that. We kind of consolidate some of those efforts into one concerted effort. So April is our month, and in May, we'll have a better idea of what the results are from there.
Yeah. I think it'll be a more efficient way to do everything, to do it all at once rather than to, you know, go out multiple times throughout the year.
You mentioned Steve Jones. Is there some insurance that you don't have Steve looking for things for the fire department and folks that are normally like to give to fire department programs and things that are going on there that we're not trying to double-dip or rob other departments of money that can usually goes to their worthy causes?
Well, you know, I guess that would be up to the individual businesses. You know, it would be similar to how it's, you know, been done with fireworks in the past. You know, all the department heads kind of went out and raised money. You know, I wouldn't mind incorporating something like that if, you know, we felt like that that would work better. But at the same time, you know, if it does become a problem, we can adjust when we do our fun drive. Or, you know, this year's kind of a pilot year, and if it doesn't go well, we can go to a Plan B.
And I think at the moment, department heads, we've made an effort to communicate among each other so that we divvy up businesses and citizens that we know so that we're reaching out to people that we have a relationship with so that we don't overlap if that's an issue that we have taken. We've made an effort to say, these are the people that we'll go to. And so, you know, lots of us know this, all the same people, but then we've divvied them up into groups so that we all go out and reach out to the ones... And of course, Casey's department has the largest list because they go out for a lot of it for the recreation programs. But we also reach out to the ones that we may know personally too and get those people.
The intent is not to harm any kind of his, you know, fundraising or, you know, whatever he does. And if we find that that is an issue, like I said, I'm sure we will adjust it because that, you know, we don't want to... We don't want, for our sake, to mess up somebody else. We're all in this together, so.
So when is this starting, this sponsorship?
We actually... I handed out all the letters to the department heads last week, towards the end of last week. And so they'll start going out, hopefully, you know, in the next week or so, and talking to businesses. And our department will be doing the same. So we'll be kind of splitting it up workload-wise for the next month.
The only comment I've got to make on that, Matt, is this. Every single year, we kind of... It seems like we wait the last minute before we start raising the money for the fireworks. And just want to make a statement. I'd like to see it have the money well in hand and ready to go way before Fourth of July gets here because if when we don't, then we have the town having to make up differences because fireworks aren't in the budget.
Well, I mean, we've always... I mean, we've always been able to raise the money for the fireworks, and this is the earliest that we've started in the last two years that we've done it. So I feel confident that if we're successful in April, by May, we'll have a good feel for what we've got. This is the... We usually start May and June, trying to get, you know, when we ask for fireworks money. So now we're going to start a little earlier in the season. I think we'll, you know, and if we make a concerted effort in the month of April, we'll know by May whether people are committed or not.
So you'll have a... Just give us a report in May as to where we are.
Where we are. And then that'll tell you how successful our campaign is. The campaign is much more... The campaign this year is much more organized and has a much more concerted effort of reaching out to people that we know are willing to participate. Now, obviously, if there's more people, and if there's people in the audience or people that we've not reached out to, we encourage them to let us know. But Casey's made a list of the people who give to his programs, people that we know that give to fireworks, people that give to other programs, and we've tried to consolidate that and reach out to those as quickly as we can. We now have a letter, a format, so it's a little more formal for what you... And the good part about it too is it also kind of lays out what you get for your contribution in terms of advertising and marketing, which I think is important to people. I mean, they do it for the right reasons, but they also want their name's going to be on... That they're going to be acknowledged. And I think in the past, we have said, we will acknowledge you. And now we're going to say, this is where you will see your name on these times during the year. And I think that's a better process for us, and I think it's a more organized process. And I appreciate the efforts that Casey's made to get that accomplished.
Any other questions? Thanks again for the time.
Next, you've got Jamie Matthews from the Director of the Public Service Department. He'll do his semi-annual report.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. This is our annual water report. We've done something a little different this year. This is just water strictly. I'll be doing street in October. And I've done it in trends, which is something a little different this time. So bear with me, and I'll try not to confuse us both. This is a pie chart. This report goes from March to February 2015 to 2016. And you can see by this chart that the biggest part of this chart's made up by Locates, which is our 811 system, which we didn't used to have, and we implemented several years ago. And it's turned out to be a really valuable tool, and it's saved us from having to come out a lot of nights and fix leaks that we shouldn't have had to fix because other utility companies didn't know we had water lines in the ground. So cutoff and cut-ons makes up another biggest part of it. I'm going to just flip to the next chart, and we can look at some percentages. I just wanted to give you an idea of how it's laid out, our cutoffs, cut-ons, new taps, repair leaks, and the miscellaneous. And the miscellaneous, I'll explain that a little more in detail. On the next trend, the three-year... On the next trend, the three-year trend, 13, 14, and 15, you can see that the Locates, which I was talking about, has went up a bunch over the years. I know when we first started out, we would have anywhere from three to five a day. Now, we're up to 180 every two days, which shows that there's a lot of stuff going on in the town of Black Mountain with other utility companies, whether it be developments, housing projects, MSD, and so on.
Jamie, you might mention what a locate is for them.
A locate is actually where we go out, and we have a machine, which we purchased a new machine last year, that's a whole lot higher tech than what we had, that locates utilities underground, such as gas, foam, water. But strictly, what we locate is water. 811 is a service that comes out and locates other utilities, like gas, foam, water, sewer, that type of stuff. That way, when companies come in, they'd actually know what they're up against. And then, if you go by rule of thumb, you'll know pretty much how deep it's supposed to be, which saves companies a lot of money when they don't have to tear out other utility companies' lines. Cut-offs and cut-ons stay pretty much the same. It just depends, it depends on a lot of people, summer homes, and we cut it on when they come into town, cut it off when they leave. New taps, you can see it's a little higher in 2014, but I predict the next report, that 'll come up somewhere consistent with 2013, just because of a lot of the development that's coming on, new developments and stuff. Our repair leaks, it was low in 13, it went up in 14, and it's come back up a little bit, but I would have predicted if we wouldn't have had that pressure reducer hang up and had all them leaks here a while back, that it would have been, it would have been lower than that. The miscellaneous, you can see it's come down from 13 to 15 a lot. It's actually, it actually went from 874 in 13 down to 405 in 15, 16, which is a really good thing, because it plays into, plays into part of our maintenance program. Total work orders, you can see they've come down. In this situation underwater, I look at this as being a good thing, and the reason why is not only is our work orders based off of just work orders, it's based off of man labor hours. So, that being said, the bigger the job, and the more people you have on the job, the less work orders you're going to have. Where, if you go back and look at the miscellaneous, sorry, I went back too far, the miscellaneous, that is like, if you see that spike in 13, that's the year we had the hard freeze, and we had pages and pages of meters that was froze, and we was out days trying to unthaw. That was work order for each person. That's the reason that one's so high. Miscellaneous can be anything from a broken meter lid, a meter box, to replacing a meter, just anything of that nature. So, that's come down, and turns made the workforce come down. So, in water, the less work orders is good, that means we're doing bigger projects. If you go to the three-year trend on totals pumped in our distribution, you can see that it was around 180 million gallons in 13, and then it jumped up in 14, and then it went back down in 15. And you can see Asheville, that what we bought from Asheville has went up consistently. But I will say that in 15, the Asheville, the 23%, would have been a little bit lower, but we've been replacing well pumps in the past year, and we had well one, which we replaced. And it was down for several months due to, when you pull a pump, sometimes you can stir up turbidity in the system. And in order to get it back online, you have to pump it for a long time and circulate the water till you get it clear, and then you have to pass the laboratory test, which we did, and it's back online. But the purchase from Asheville and the totals pump, Asheville would be probably about the same, maybe a little more, but definitely, our total pump would be up for us. On the net water produced and total accounted for and net loss, you can see 13, 14, and 15, the total accounted for, it's pretty consistent across the board. Our net loss has actually went down some, which is a good thing. And you can relate that to, you know, frozen lines, and you can relate that to having 811 implemented and not having as many leaks throughout the year. So, that number's something that we're going to focus on getting lower and lower as we go along. That's our goal.
Is total accounted for, total billed, is that what that is?
Total accounted for is, yes, that's total, that's total, that's netted in the system that we've accounted for, that's passed through a meter that we actually know has not leaked out into the ground or disappeared in other means.
I realize that when you end up getting, someone hits a water line and it breaks, and it's just spewing, that's part of that net loss.
Yes.
And that's going to occur several times. I mean, even we break lines, or, you know.
Even when the.
What would you say would be a rough estimate? Could you say that that is, of that 35%, would you say that 10% is just lost because of broken lines that were broken by contractors? Would it be that high?
Uh, I would say that it would used to be, but I would say that because of 811, that 10% is probably lower than that now. I mean, we still have it happen a few times through the year, but I can remember before that it would happen once or twice a week.
Yeah. The reason I just mentioned it, just because it still means that we're losing well into 25% of the water somewhere, and we don't know where.
Correct. Correct. And that's why, that's why we want to implement, you know, replacing lines through the years and updating our water system. When we get to projects, we got some things to talk about that's really good, so.
Jamie, I know there's probably some people in here who are kind of scratching their heads, and folks who see this on TV are going to do the same thing, but why do we purchase water from Asheville?
We have 12 wells in our system, and by the amount of water they produce, we started out having to buy water from Asheville, because we have drilled over 20 wells in the future, and none of them passed, because they failed bacteria samples or other reasons that they would fail related to that. So, basically, we've looked at other places to drill wells and that type of stuff, and looking at the money. So, we had a tie-in to Asheville that we've utilized, and so, we buy water from them to make up for the water that we can't produce at this point. And the way Black Mountain is growing, and you'll see that percentage rate go up. I know one of the projects that we have talked about in the future is creating a new tie-in with Asheville, because right now, we're sort of limited to the amount of water that we can buy from them. Because of where the tie-in actually is, it starves water from a location that they have on Wallace Mountain that starves some customers they have. So, in turn, they let us buy water between certain times of day. If we get the new tie-in, then it would be unlimited, considering where it was at, because it would be utilizing another piece of the distribution system.
Okay. So, when we buy water from, at what price are we buying? Is it wholesale, retail? Are we turning around and reselling it to our customers?
Then, you can probably speak to that.
We have a wholesale price.
We haven't had a productive well in 20-plus years, have we? Drilled a new productive well.
And we drilled at least 20 wells, you know, by talking to everybody. But anyway, on our water system projects, our hydrant testing we completed this year, we've done 1 through 155 of our hydrants. For this year, we've got 156 through 400, which, if you're wondering why the big difference, the numbers jump on some of them. And in 2017, we'll actually do them all. So, we're on sort of a system where we'll do Laurel Ridge and Asheville and ours in 2017. But that was completed this year. We're scheduled to start again for 2016. Water line replacements, we've replaced Bridge Street. We just killed a two on Chapel Road and put them customers over on to a six. So, that eliminated that line that needed to be replaced, which was a good thing. We just completed that about two weeks ago. We have got the stuff ordered and in-house right now to replace the line on South Ridgeway from 70 to Central, and we'll try to get that line replaced. And then, we've got some other lines we're going to replace in this new budget year. And we'll utilize GIS for that. Well pump replacement, we've replaced well one and well five. And looking at the numbers on well five, which is the one on Vance Avenue, because it was oversized and it wasn't pumping efficiently, we actually gained 10 gallons a minute, which is about 7,200 gallons a day in a 12-hour cycle. So, it definitely proved to be more efficient to replace them pumps. And we've got well 19 scheduled to replace, and we'll probably start on that next week. So, that's all good things that'll be more efficient for our well houses. The old Toll Road pump station, I've talked to numerous people on this, and we're going to do this project in-house. We've already sat down and looked at the blueprints and got a parts list together, and we also looked at building the pump house. And we're pretty confident we can do it for $113,000. If we bitted it out, I'm pretty confident by talking to the right people that it would cost the town 250 to 300,000. So, that'd be a good thing to get that completed in-house and save the taxpayers some money. The permits have been, the design is complete on that project. The permits were sent out to Water Supply Section March the 14th. It's usually a 30-to-60-day permit, so we're in the 30-day range, so that should happen anytime. And we've still got to finalize some easements with the land on it. But we're expecting and shooting for a permit May the 1st. That's our goal. And we can get started on that project. Black Mountain State's pumping motor upgrade. We currently have 20 horsepower motors in there. We're upgrading them to a 40 horsepower, which will, it will double the production of filling them tanks. So, if we ever had a tank go dry like we did, it will refill that tank twice as quick. So, that'd definitely be an upgrade for that system on that side of town. Them pumps are actually being ordered, the minute they get here, we will schedule them to get them put in. We will be doing them in-house also. Carolina Heights, pressure sustaining valve. I'll talk about a couple of other projects. That project, the RPV for Chapel Road and Charmelody, we actually got the engineer to permit all three of them together, which was a money saver. So, they're all being permitted as we speak. So, the permit process will be done for them three. The PRV at Chapel will be adding an extra reducer there, and also a strainer, which basically will have double the protection of what we originally talked about. You'll be able to check the restrainer, if there's any rocks or anything in that, we can clean it out. If it bypasses that and claws the reducer like it done, we got a backup reducer. So, we're going to have, we're going to have two, we're going to have two means of protection there. So, that's actually being permitted also, as we talk about it. And the design is actually done on that project, and should look for some permits around April 15th, and hopefully, we can start work on that June the 1st. GIS GPS mapping, we've got all of our hydrants, valves, lines, tanks, pump stations, well houses. We just finished meters, and Sean's currently working on the settings. And John Beck with Land of Sky has been working with Sean on stormwater, and it is ready. We've got to sit down, a couple of us, and talk and make sure and finalize everything, and then it will be implemented to the map, and it'll have all the intakes and outfalls on that. And then, we'll have to map all the blow-offs. And if you don't know what the blow-offs are, they're on the end of a dead-end water line, which you can cut on every now and then to circulate that line. That way, the sedimentation don't settle in that line. And then, all the attributes on the system, Sean's done a really good job of cleaning that up. And so, it's a really nice system, and it's really going to be beneficial to the water system. On SCADA, I know we've touched base on this during our budget meetings and stuff, but for the general public that don't know what we're talking about, it is put in our water system, it'll be automated, and it's unlimited what we can do to it. It can, we can, it'll be on tanks, meters, wells. It'll be a money saver, plus it, when these events happen, we'll know about it right then. So, like, if we lose power during one of the windstorms, we'll know it immediately. If one of the pumps quit, we know it immediately. If a tank starts falling, we can set it to where, if it drops to a certain amount of feet or gallons, you can set it feet or gallons, the pumps automatically kick on, which will bring up a good thing about the pump station we mentioned from Asheville. We manually have to go out and cut that on and off now. In the future, if the other pump station we talked about was getting mentioned, it would be automated, too. So, when the tank levels drop, it would automatically kick on. So, in turn, it would save an amount of cough hours, just in man-hours. It's a big savings, you know, not including holidays and stuff. It could save 7,200 and some dollars a year. Our Chapel Road Charmelody PRV, that's basically just a copy of Chapel Road. We have another PRV over there. We will be putting a backup on it. And then, electronic reading meters, I know Dean touched base with you on that. We've got about 50 of them in the ground, and I know that's been a sore subject for years. This is just a pilot test. The only trouble, and talking to the girls up front in Beale, and they've not had hardly no trouble at all out of them. The meter reader has not. The only thing they had is one of the magnets that actually turns the meter on was not strong enough. When the tech come out, he realized that, and everything has been fine since on them. So, we've got 50 of them in the ground. We put them in the worst places we thought we could put them, where there's high pressure and then just dirt, grime, and the ones that stay underwater constantly. And at this point, 25 of them's been in the ground for about a year on the high-pressure side. And the other ones, that's been on, just the terrain itself being rough, has probably been in the ground, I'm going to say, probably two to three months now. But anyway, that's the water report for this year. We've got a lot of good things planned, a lot of good things going on. I know the miscellaneous part of it just shows that we've got a lot of our maintenance programs are moving forward, and they're getting better, and we're getting a lot of meters insulated before winter and getting boxes changed, that they don't even make in production anymore and things of that nature. So, if we can get the numbers down, that's a good thing for us. If you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
Jamie, just out of curiosity, what was going on on State Street there in front of Montevista today?
That was an actual water leak.
Oh, okay.
A two-inch line was leaking. And the good thing about them, the GIS, I know we've talked about this before, that information goes into the system. That line's rated, whether it's poor condition, fair condition, or good condition. And then, at the end of this year, we'll take the information that we've compiled from all the leaks we've had and look at these lines, and that'll be lines that we'll look at replacing within this year. And we will try to get, start getting some of these old two-inch lines and stuff replaced.
But wasn't that one of the lines that we replaced when we went ahead and, before the state repaved the road?
This line actually runs up in New Bern, so.
Oh, okay. It was not on 70?
No, it was not on 70.
Excuse me. I had a question on there, talking about the old Toll Road pump station. That's just a pump station, right? There's not a well up there?
There's not a well, just a pump station. What that will do, that will give us a new six-inch line. The pumps we have now are just outdated. They're not up to date. So, that's going to bring us up to date with the state as far as our pumps go, and it'll give us a new line. And we also have an old six-inch line that runs what we call a cross-country line, which is ones we want to get rid of, because it's ones that could run through your backyard or through the mountains, and it's an older line. So, by us doing that, we're not only upgrading the system, we're killing that back country line, which will be a good thing.
They're out of the city limits, correct?
Where the pump station is, yes.
Most of the residents there are, they're outside the city limits, right?
Yes. I mean, it's, you know, obviously, it pumps into town, so it serves, but yes, they're outside the city limits. Or is that right there? All, that's all outside the city limits?
It is. Actually, we've had, you know, there's several permits we've had to go through, not only water supply, but we've had to go through DOT and plus private land on it.
I mean, I realize that this is something that we've done, pat previous boards, okay, going ahead and selling them water and stuff, but, you know, we're having to pay for this extra pump, this pump house, in order to get it to them.
Well, but the pump, now, the pump, now, there's, I mean, the line and the pump house are outside the city limits, but this is pumping into the, I mean, this is, this is just moving.
It feeds Charmelody.
That's right. This feeds into Charmelody's tank. This pumps into the system, though.
So, this is Charmelody's tank? This'll go.
The, well, the old Toll Road pump station is in the kind of. The, well, the old Toll Road pump station is on, is in the, kind of in the curve on Toll Road and then it, you know, it, that's where it's pumping the water up through the system.
So it's, so it's pumping it to the Charmelody tank?
Yes, and I mean, it's pumping to that tank and then, and then that's, that's who it is.
They did pay extra money in the past.
Okay.
To get that done, okay.
Right, but it, yes, but and, and so it does.
I was under the impression this is just for the old Toll Road and I was thinking, well, if they're outside the city limits.
No, 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 it, I mean, it, it, it pumps into the, it pumps into the system so that, I mean, it serves people inside the town limits too.
It charges that tank and, and actually, the, them pumps are really undersized, so it's basically doing the same thing there as it would on Chapel. Um, 'cause I know we can get a three-quarter leak, which is just a distribution line or a service line from the distribution line, which if most people know what that is, it's not much of a leak, but if you don't find it quick, it, the smaller that tank is, it drops it pretty rapidly, so. Having bigger motors, we can definitely refill that tank a whole lot quicker.
All right, good report, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we go to consent agenda.
Yes, sir, you've got the um, adoption of minutes from your agenda workshop, regular session and your budget workshop in March. We've got a budget amendment, um, from Land of Sky recognizing revenues in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, that's to cover the difference for the watershed management plan that we had a report on, um, a couple of months ago, we had, um, that was also funded from the Pigeon River Fund, so between those two, between the Pigeon River Fund and this, the difference here between Land of Sky, there was no expense to the town, um, to have that, have that report done. You have uh, two calls for public hearings, one to uh, one for a text amendment um, regarding residential driveways and the width of uh, driveways and changing that from twelve feet to twenty feet. And a call for public hearing for text amendments that allow secondary dwellings, um, with certain conditions on, in residential areas, I think the, you know, we discussed this briefly, but the, the uh, the premise there was that, that that might encourage some affordable housing, some, some different uses and some density in residential districts, but our ordinance did not, while I think the intent was to allow that, the ordinance, the way it was worded, um, did not allow that, and so that'll make this, that'll make this correction, but that's a call for public hearing for next month. And then you've got a resolution to provide matching funds for Riverwalk Greenway Phase Two. We have, um, you have, you have a resolution, last year we did this just as a letter, but you know, we applied for uh, funding from um, the DOT, this uh, this uh, the STP VA money that we, uh, that, that we received initially and now we would like to apply for all of it, it's two million dollars. Um, with our match being four hundred thousand dollars and that's what's reflected in the resolution and that way we can go, um, um, go forward and, and request that funding from the state and that is your consent agenda.
All right, anybody wish to discuss any wish, one of those in, in particular, or if not, if I hear a motion to pass the com, the complete consent agenda?
So move.
All right, end discussion, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done. All right, uh, we now have a special citizen comment for the new business, which is for the Montessorial School Leaks at Carver. I don't see anybody signed up for it.
Nobody signed up for that.
So we're at the new business, which is the new, the Swanano Valley Montessorial School Leaks. And I think that, do we, do we need to go ahead and, and, and make, just go ahead and Snee, we just call it a special call meeting and then we can make the motion for that at the meeting, or we have to make the motion now and then have a special call?
You're, you're having your meeting and discussion tonight, so I talked to Matt earlier. It's, you could do it either way, continue this meeting to that night and finish, or you can just adjourn tonight and call for special meeting next week. Either one's fine.
Uh, what I would say, if you want to, you're, obviously, Ron, you correct me if I'm wrong, you're, you're free to, to discuss it, I think is our discussion from the, from the agenda session, it was the, and, and we've had some discussions with the, with the folks in Montessori School, so we were gonna um, table this, not, we'll table this issue and then, and then address it at a special meeting or at a, or at, if we don't adjourn this meeting, you know, you could, you could address it then.
So does anybody wish to discuss it or else?
I guess that's the question.
If you wish to discuss it, you can, but you're gonna have a special. If nobody wishes to discuss it, I suggest we just have a special call meeting, a motion to have a special call meeting.
Yeah, don't, well, this is, and Ron and I have discussed this previously, I would not, I think, Ron, do you think we need to continue the meeting or can we just have a special call meeting and then, and then you can adjourn this meeting?
I would probably feel, I didn't bring the statute with me because, but it references a regular meeting of the board and that. I'd feel a little more comfortable if you simply, uh, adjourned, but continued that portion of this meeting to the, the next date to continue the discussion of this topic.
So now your motion won't be to call a special meeting, your motion would be to continue to um, table, table this item and continue the meeting on April nineteenth at five thirty.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So move.
Don makes the motion, in discussion, all in favor?
Now, this would be advertised, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, yeah, well, we will, yes, we'll still advertise it, although it's not a special meeting now, so.
There's no requirement.
There's no requirement to.
Part of the bench continuing to, I, they're certain, but I understand they're gonna go ahead and do some publicity.
I think you'll probably just do, we'll do, we'll do it anyway, treat it like a special meeting, but you're gonna, but what we're doing is continuing this meeting, so when you're done, go and adjourn this meeting.
Do we have a date for that?
And the special meeting will be Tuesday, April the nineteenth at five thirty PM in this room. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passage unanimous. All right, communication staff.
I have nothing to do this month.
And the only thing that I would add, um, Mr. Mayor, is to remind everybody that we do have vacancies on our boards and commissions. Um, you'll see those in the newspaper coming out, I guess maybe this, this week, will it be in the newspaper this weekend, Angela?
The last week of April and the first week of May.
Okay, the last week of April and the first week of May, you'll see advertisements, but I would encourage, if you know people that are interested in serving on any of our boards and commissions, we always, we'll have um, vacancies on all of those, the application deadline will be Friday, May twentieth by five o'clock and we'll do, as we always do, we'll appoint in June and swear in in July, but if, but, but obviously I would encourage people who want to uh, to serve on them to get with Angela and uh, and see what our vacancies are and, and get an application turned in. That's all that I have.
That's all you have. Does, uh, do we have any comments from uh, any of the board members, if they wish to say anything?
The, the only thing I'd like to say is I appreciate uh, John, Mr. Hyde, Michelle, and the, the folks coming tonight and, and uh, bringing up some of the issues. I will say that currently I'm a little encouraged by the reception that the uh, the folks at Tudor Croft seem to get the message and seem to uh, be, be willing to have some open lines of communications with you guys. It's just gonna be a matter of time before we tell. It's uh, but I think there was, there was uh, a good effort on everybody's part to try to have a meeting of the minds and uh, I'll just say I was encouraged with that and appreciate y'all being here.
And I appreciate Don taking the time to go and meet with you folks and that you've gone ahead and set up your own group. Keep in mind that when you made your comments, I know you were wanting to get in maybe some dialogue, but citizen comment is as it says, it is comments from the citizens. So we heard what you said, uh, Matt's been working on it, Don's been there and it did not, it's not idle chatter, believe me. We, we are looking into this and hopefully there will be this resolution, but it's gonna take some time. Uh, I originally brought this up a couple of years ago, at least a year ago, with the route of the water that, that comes down from Bird Road to High Wassy, goes under High Wassy and then behind Gay Foxes and then goes into what we refer to as the crater at the golf course. You know, and of course that is working and that did have a lot of mud in it. Unfortunately, a lot of the mud got distributed along the way at various other people's properties. But there again, we have a system in place, we just have to fine, fine tune it. I do wanna mention one other thing before, before, before we close this meeting, not adjourned. Uh, we've heard a lot about this, the, the actions of the legislature and normally, you know, that whatever they do in Raleigh, they do in Raleigh because that just basically affects what's happening there. Unfortunately, one of the things that was, that occurred that's in this bill, this HB two that you've been hearing so much, so much about, there was some stuff tucked in at the very end of that, that has really not gotten much, much light and I, I think that it's very, very important because it has to do with workers. North Carolina is an employment-at-will state, which means that a employer may fire his employee at any time. Now, there are certain things that employer cannot do and that is why that was set up, the employment, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. Well, unfortunately, that commission has been practically defunded and if somebody did get fired and they thought they were discriminated against, they now can't do it in state court, they gotta go to federal court. Not only have to go to federal court, which is more expensive, takes more time, the, the damages are capped at like three hundred thousand. But the most, the, the, the thing that gets me the most is that it doesn't matter whether it's a municipal employee, uh, whether, whether it's a private employer. In the past, you could not go ahead, there was one exception basically, this employment-at-will. You could not fire somebody for asking them to do an illegal job and if they didn't do it, they could be fired. Now, an employer can ask someone to do an illegal act and they could be fired and they cannot take that to court. I think that's, that's, that is just not correct, I don't think it's right, I don't think it's good for the workers. Uh, this is something that's been going on for years and years. Uh, this is almost a complete separate issue from, from the, from the other part of the bill that gets all the, I would encourage, read the bill. If you find that you also agree with this, get in touch with your legislatures. I think this is very, very important, this is quite a regressive step and not a protection of workers' rights. And now I'll go ahead and say that we move to, uh, we're not gonna clo, we're just gonna close the meeting. Recession until April the nineteenth at five thirty.
Your Honor, will there be time to make an announcement or just for a minute?
Uh, if the board is agreeable to that?
That would be the discretion of the board.
Anyone object? Okay, please come up and.
Thank you. I'm sorry I didn't get the chance to get here in time to get on the agenda, but I did wanna invite the board and the citizens of uh, Black Mountain to the Second Annual World Tai Chi and Qi Gong Day that I'll be putting on in front of Dobro T at the end of the month. The fifth, the, the last Saturday of every year in April is World Tai Chi and Qi Gong Day and this will be the second time we're celebrating it here in Black Mountain. Um, the uh, you'll see these flyers around town here pretty soon. And uh, last year the mayor was kind enough to issue a proclamation in that regard and came out and read the proclamation for us. I wanna thank you for that and I'd invite you to, to do the same again this year. Um, World Tai Chi and Qi Gong Day has four purposes, I think that uh, are very important for our town to educate the world of the health and healing benefits. As a chiropractor here, that's one of the things I'm most concerned about is uh, public health and so that's one of the reasons I put this on, to educate Black Mountaineers about the benefits of Tai Chi and Qi Gong. Uh, the second purpose of the uh, World Tai Chi and Qi Gong Day is to thank Chinese culture for creating and sharing these gifts. Third, to bring it together across racial, economic, religious, and geopolitical boundaries to join people together for health and healing and to give a powerful example of how the power of the internet can be used to foster uh, global health and healing. This is a celebration that starts in New Zealand at ten o'clock and moves around the world through every time zone and at ten o'clock on the eastern uh, seaboard, everybody that practices Tai Chi and Qi Gong will be practicing that at that time, then it'll move to central mountain in Pacific time around the rest of the world to Hawaii. And so it's a, it's a really neat event and I really want to encourage anybody that would like to know more about Qi Gong. There'll be, all, all the prac, practitioners I know of in the area who do teach uh, Qi Gong and Tai Chi will be participating. There'll be information there so people can find out uh, what classes they'd be interested, they can meet the practitioners and they can get together and enjoy this day and I wanna thank you for your uh, indulgence to uh, let me give you this announcement.
Very good. Uh, recess until April nineteenth.